Let me start off, State Department or President, in accordance with the convention, a whole public meeting packed in JSA 10, stolen four dash six, P L of 1975, C 3, 2, 3, 1, S 1 amended 2, 0, 16, 78, comma, S 2, the Asbury Park Board, in case of private adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of time and date, location, and the event, and the agenda of the meeting to Asbury Park Press. The new post will be January 27, 2025, by email, copy of the notice, also the place and administrative building, building reports, district office, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, file of city clerk, January 27, 2023. Commission statement, Asbury Parks School District will remind all students of a comprehensive progressive education program for everyone with skills and character. The first possible role is the role call.
Ms. Ackerman, here. Ms. Lard, here. Ms. Ms. Laura Rockland, here. Ms. Zensky, here. Ms. Penn, here. Ms. Ray, Ms. Glass, here. Ms. Rogers, here. Ms. Rooks did a lot of research on this.
Ms. Ms. Rooks has passed to join the meeting urgently, can I give a word of thanks?
To move Ms. Rooks to join the meeting urgently. Ms. Ackerman, yes. Ms. Lard, yes. Ms. Laura Rockland, yes. Ms. Zensky, yes. Ms. Ray, Ms. Glass?
Yes, but I would like to take a moment to note that this is a private meeting and I hear you.
There's a motion on the table, I should have come this time.
But I know I respond to that question. I noted at the last meeting that several people who just voted yes voted no to allow Ms. Clark and Dr. Pennington to participate. I think that was petty, but in the spirit of collegiality and professional behavior, I'm voting yes to Ms. Rooks.
Ms. Rockland, yes.
Glassman.
My ladies, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start this meeting, I would like to make a point to be known that one of our elected board members has moved out of the district, and I would like to say something. Mr. Joe Grillo has been in for nine years, and in the last years, you know, even after we have really worked together, we've done a good job, and some of the things that we've done, I think, have been very beneficial to this district. And the significant time that he's spent has been exhausting, and I would like to show appreciation for him, the time he's spent, the time he's spent away from his family, the love that he has for his children, we're also gonna miss his daughter, coming leaving the district. She has been a powerful joy to house, high school, community, and I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate the time that you've spent working for this community and these children in Asbury Park. So I would like to hear you.
You guys, you got it, you look them up?
Hello, hello.
Does that work? Oh my gosh. Hi, everyone. I had a speech and I threw it out because it didn't express the gratitude that I feel when it comes to this community, this district. I'm gonna be short, I promise. Never give a microphone to a preacher or a politician, that's hard. But I'm going to Asbury Park when I was 28 years old. I was a kid that loved punk rock and wanted to be close to the music and art scene. And when I first moved here, stuck my nose in places that people said I shouldn't. I got called Christopher Bongas by some folks, but it's, Asbury Park has been, I like to joke with my wife, the longest relationship I've ever had. And I am just so grateful for every single one.
We love you.
Well, I love you. I only need to get into public service. I, you know, the brick wall tablet looking down there across from my house, I complained about the noise and everything, I know I was on boards and committees and all kinds of stuff. And through it all, and all the political re-roll and everything, the greatest service that I the greatest service that I experienced was serving on this board with all of those people. To, to invest everything that you have, including your family, into a school district is something that has measurable value. And we made a lot of mistakes, some very recently, but no one can say that I didn't fight for every single child in this district. Especially when it mattered, and especially when it wasn't politically convenient. So really quick, I just have a few things. I do want to thank every single board member that I have served with, and all the way from 2017, Angela, Kenneth, Connie, Dominic, Barbara, Ms. Carol Jones, that I really wish she was here. Eric Nathan, Corita Cook, Jesus, let me list my next. Shidin Albeck, Anthony Reddy, most of all, the folks that Stephanie Ackerman, Shadie Maxu, Tracy, Mike Penn, Kristen Clark, and Len.
Hey, Joe.
And, hold on, I'm getting to you. It's here, right here. And Ms. Sheila Etienne, our full board, board president, you go down. We may not always agree, but I never doubt that anyone's commitment to the kids. The one thing that I see is that the easiest thing that someone can do is to say those five magic words, "I am for the kids." It's another thing to actually put those words into action. And I could say that I'm proud of what we have done from the very beginning back out on this board, when you actually had real corruption and dysfunction on the board, where you didn't even have quorum for meetings for months on end, and we brought that back into place. But especially what we did in these past year and a half with my colleagues, I can't tell you how much I respect and honor everything that we have done together. Because it wasn't a popular thing, it wasn't politically convenient thing, it wasn't something that was easily done to appease. The teachers you knew, the homeowners, or whoever, we did it subtly for children, and children are gonna benefit from that. And I know from personal experience, because my daughter. My daughter, my daughter, I'm proud to say, is a blue bishop. And that's something you can't take away from her. I want to thank the teachers, because these teachers, I know from experience, not only do they care about the teachers, but they have the talent, the determination, and the self-sacrifice to bring these teachers up, to bring these kids up to a higher level, especially now, because we have an acting superintendent that, dude, let me tell you now, if I ever doubt you, I apologize, because I would vote for you as acting superintendent every single day if you used to fight on somebody. This guy has done, this guy has done such sacrifice, he has weathered the storm, and I'm so happy that he's gonna be here for another year. And all the administrators, the principals, and then finally, the actual families and students of the Asbury Parks School District. It's one thing to see them when you're up on the dais, it's a number when you're a parent and you see them up close, friends of my daughter, and you see them at graduation. They're not just walking across the stage, they're saving their own lives with help from us. And then finally, I want to thank my incredible, tenacious wife, too. I swear to God, I'm a talented, so my emotions come up, you know, it happens, so I'm sorry for a little replant. But I couldn't have done this without you, I couldn't have done this with this entire community, the churches, the elected officials, the city council, mayor, more, our legislators. They all deserve a round of applause because of the collaboration that they've done with this new regime over here. And with that, I only want to say, look, the job is not done. The thing that I regret the most is that the job is not finished, we're not spiking the football. We've done some incredible things. I know, I'm gonna go, I, she wants me off the stage. But I know you're gonna stay, I'm gonna miss you too. But I have faith that this, this board is gonna do the right thing and keep the kids, not just in words, but indeed centered in everything that they do. And I just want to thank everybody for your support and love, so.
I'd like to thank my wife and my daughter. Please, make sure you turn these flowers over to your wife and your daughter. I first want to say, I want to thank Julie, Julie, can you come up?
I, oh, I can.
We have to thank this young lady for running all this long, we've known her, because families who were putting their times in on this, on this board have exhaustively spent and had us out of time, running out, doing long meetings, thank you. But being exhausted to get everything done, so I would like to thank Julie and your daughter, your beautiful daughters, for sacrificing their time, so thank you. Let's please get a round. I think we should open this up for participating, so I can read this.
In accordance with the board policy 0167, Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public the opportunity to express themselves on school members or community units. Public comment portion of this meeting is not a question and answer section, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the providing officer of the meeting. Members of the public who should make public comments must be recognized by the providing officer and apply their name to the municipality of residence and per affiliation given power. All public comments shall be, again, directed to the providing officer and are limited to three minutes' duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and would interfere in the ordinary operation of the board's board meeting, may lose their right to access.
Thank you. Each person has three minutes, so we can open them to the processing person.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Sheila Etienne. I'm now resident at Tullwood, I'm always a bishop. I was on board for six years, I was board president, I was board vice president, and I watched the evolution of the board, up and down, and size, and. I do want to commend this current board and board for the past few years on maybe some instrumental changes that we weren't able to. Closing the board office that we're paying a quarter million dollars a year and utilizing the building, that's what we utilize. My sister owns a restaurant that's ranked next to the third of Marching, and I have to say, in those small meetings, that the morale of the teachers has gone dramatically. And in no small way, it's been a mystery to me. So I'm proud that the board has elected to have him for that here, because I create in terms of around and teacher participation, including the students, that he's taking a good turn. Congratulations.
Good evening, Ms. Sheila Rossel, 200 Jefferson Street. I'm a part of this, you know, you might have gotten married, but you still are. I hope my group of board are fair and fair, you know, because, you know, because we're a group, we love you, though. But I'm here to act, basketball season is over, okay? Not this board, not the reference on the board. We voted, the whole board voted yes for a bill on the 9th, 3rd. Basketball season is over, it doesn't start again in October. What is the problem? What's the holdup? I know you can't answer, but I need to answer. You were calling to tell me, but no, seriously, we need to get this thing done for basketball season to start? I know, okay, he was one Asbury Park, right? He graduated from kindergarten, and they had kindergarten graduation, like if you had started, I mean, by the time you graduated, you had started, so that's it. Kindergarten graduation, fifth grade graduation, eighth grade graduation, he might have graduated from high school, but that's pre-graduation, so that, we, I, I use that one. So that's eight years compared to forty years. So we need to get this thing done, and I'm moving back in feet, I don't know what the problem is, but if you need some help, I'll get some people to come do the building. You know, there's a whole bunch of good tattoo artists out there, if they can do a tattoo, I'm sure they can paint on the building. So if you need some help, my number is, call me, you know where I'm at, Jefferson Street, bye.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Peace, and I'm the vice president of the Madison Food Pantry. We want to first congratulate Joe Grillo and Julie, thank God for your service, and it is the greatest characteristic of leaders, they respond to responsibility, and Joe, knowing that there was need in the community in the midst of the pandemic, partnered with some people and fed and reached out to the community, and I'm mentioning this because, yes, he was a part of the board, but his reach extended far beyond just the school board. He cared about people in the community, and because of his commitment and his initiative, we formed and started our own food pantry and community to help invent the people. So we just want to applaud and thank and appreciate Julie. We appreciate Julie, and I know she sends her love to you, to Julie, you guys are family, so we appreciate you, and you, I know it hurts your heart to leave Asbury Park, but you're making a good choice. I'm from Freehold, so you're making a good choice. I do want to.
I'm from there too.
Exactly, exactly. So, so we appreciate everything that you've done, and we know that there's great work ahead of you as well, and she sends her love as well, she wished she could have been here. To the Asbury Park School District, we want to, I want, from my standpoint, I want to encourage you guys. There's a lot of work that needs to be done with our children and in this community. I want to encourage you to not be wary and well-known. Use every resource, be, be present in the community, connect with these parents, with these children, so that you'll know the needs, you'll know the, you know what they stand the need of, so that you can make better decisions. Partner with the teachers and everybody else, because as hard as the task may be, we can turn this around. So we encourage you, and thank you for your time tonight.
Good evening. My name is George Scott, I live in Second Baptist Church of Asbury Park. During the pandemic, Julie and Joe, as a part of the Asbury Park Dinner Table, they served the community. And I just want you to know, Joe, that you're always a part of Second Baptist Church, and we thank you for your commitment to the community. But those of you who don't know, the Asbury Park Dinner Table was very influential. We helped anybody who showed up and even delivered meals. So if we work together as, as a community, we succeed. And just to brag a little bit, I'm proud, proud of the Asbury Parks school system. Most sincerely, it goes for Asbury, goes back to you, succeed, and no danger. My teaching career has been with the Neptune Town School District, I just finished my 47th year. Asbury Park offered one day after accepting a contract with Neptune, but I do think he has to know that our children are our future. If we work together as a community, there isn't anything that we can't succeed. I let everybody know. I'm the bishop of Asbury Park, so God bless you all.
Good evening, board, I'm gonna make this short, sweet, simple. When I met this man, years ago. One phone call, I seen I need a favor, and he set me up, and he's been setting me up since day one. And I don't mind, because when it comes to, when it comes to the babies in this district, and when it comes to my parents in this community, I would give my last and give my all. And I know this man has been doing that since I've met him from day one, because he actually set me up on some of those Asbury Park Dinner Peoples, where I had to do comp stuff, thinking about free meals, and then I get yelled at by the seniors, because nobody wanna eat plant no more. So I just want to say, it's been a pleasure. I'm not done with you yet. Even though you're not in Asbury, I still be getting on you nerves. But this is to the board, seriously, like from here moving forward, it's great to have a community come out and, you know, give their heartfelt, you know, due diligence for losing somebody on this board. But I hope moving forward, that we seriously take it into consideration, that every last one of you have to understand, we are still here for our babies. Without our children, you guys would not be sitting at that table. So I need all of us that are sitting at this table to focus on our babies. To get on the personal issues, to get up whatever, who said what, I don't care, at the end of the day, it's all about our children. And I'm also here to let everybody know, I will set every last one of y'all up this year, I'd like to start seeing my board members at the schools, with our children, getting involved, and showing them that not only the parents said that, not only will we expect our parents to come out and show support, but I need our board to come out and show our children the same support we're expecting our parents to. Because until you guys start coming out to these schools and getting involved with our children who are dealing with, you're not gonna get these parents off their seats to come out either. You have to start setting the example for our parents, that you care about these kids just as much as they do. So come September, when you see knocking on your door, or calling your house, or calling you out for a meeting, I'm expecting every last board member to really start giving a dag on about these kids, and start showing up, attending meetings, come to events, showing their support. Because it shouldn't only be left on some of the board members, every last one of y'all to take responsibility for showing our kids the support that they deserve. Until you do that, these kids think that you don't give a damn about them, and that's not fair. You have to start getting involved and let these kids understand that you do care. Just because you sit at this table, you still need to be in those schools, talking to these kids, understanding what these kids are dealing with, dealing with, whatever, in your business. So I'm holding every last one of y'all accountable as of tonight. You won't see me for August, but I'll be back in September.
Smart man, Trent, I want to thank President Rogers, Vice President Glassman, pleasure, we will meet soon at the superintendent of meetings, about a few wonderful things about you. I do want to say, first, my friend, Joe, we've been doing a whole lot of work together, but as Mayor Scott talked about, the Asbury Park Dinner Table started with a phone call between you and I, we had space, and you had food, and we brought them together, and we fed hundreds of thousands of meals, and what an amazing impact was being through that Asbury Park Dinner Table and that partnership. But not only that, your work in Asbury Park is something that has shifted the tide and changed paradigm, and will continue to leave an indelible impression on so many of our lives. And so, on behalf of myself, my family, and all of those who are not able to say thank you, I I want to say thank you for the work that you've done in our community. To the board, I want to say that, uh, I am the same co-founder, when my wife and I arrived in Asbury Park in February two thousand fifteen, but in two thousand sixteen, we founded a nonprofit agency called Inspired Life. And they're actually doing work to really bolster and enhance, uh, the, and give exposure to the youth of this city and surrounding area. And so, uh, Inspired Life is one, is a, is a camp, uh, not just a camp, but it's a nonprofit that produces programs where creativity and innovation collide into this amazing, uh, mosaic of youth and their creativity and gives them opportunities and steam and fine arts and technology. And, um, and its impact has garnered not just state, a liberal and state attention, but also national attention. Right now, we're running a, uh, we're running a freedom school, uh, CDF Freedom School with forty kids, um, at Sisters Academy. And these kids are being introduced to literacy, uh, with books that are relevant and with books that are, um, that help them to understand the world at large. Uh, I submitted on, uh, this week, I submitted a bill to use speech for, for our bottom school. Uh, we are in a place, uh, we at Sisters Academy for six weeks, but I was sent to the camp, uh, we are in Dida Space. And so this is my, uh, my pre-proposal, uh, to ask that you all, uh, when that is reviewed, that, um, and just for the week of August eleven to fifteen, that you seem, uh, with favor and that we can continue the work that we're doing here. And I certainly look forward to finding out how we can partner even more on time as we go on in the future. Thank you all very much for your work.
Hi, good evening, my name is Dr. Stephanie Delesia of the Asbury Police. My name is Dr. Delesia, and I started working with Joe back in the Boys and Girls Club. Um, from there, I built a program for the Reserve Wildlife Foundation in the Asbury Park School District. I was a classmate at that time, worked with Joe, uh, very instrumental in doing that. Currently, I'm on the Board of Trustees for Rockdown Community College. Um, also, I'm a Deputy Director with the State of New Jersey, um, with Youth Challenge Program. So I came here because I wanted to thank Joe for his unwavering support for the kids of Asbury Park and the community, to his support for also the families, the teachers, the community at large, and being so child-centered and making such an impact. And I just wanted to publicly thank him and give him accolades that he deserved. So thank you for letting me speak.
Anyone else want to speak?
Good evening, my name is Sandra Mack, I'm a resident of Asbury Park, and I'm here to talk about Joe. I met Joe a lot of years ago, but when I really met Joe, it was me and him. Then he was doing a big campaign and it was like the whole Asbury was supposed to be there, it was wonderful. When I got to Rockford, me and Joe, we were the only two people out of the whole town. Everybody said it was coming, he did. And guess what, me and Joe ran the whole entire Asbury, I did the west side, while he did up north, getting east side, we met up, and guess what? He been my friend since, he a good man, good person, really sad to see him go, but I do love Joe.
Good evening, Elizabeth Smith, I'm not a resident of Asbury Park, but I do work in the community. Joe, congratulations, we're gonna miss you. I first met Joe when we hosted a candidate's forum, the school board candidate's forum, and I've met many of you in that way. And so, we are gonna miss you. But, uh, a couple of things I wanted to say. One, I noticed that we have a food service management contract up. I've had several parents talk to me about food that's being served, that it is often cold and uncooked or un, or prepared, you know, not correctly. So I have heard that a number of times. I don't know if there's any, um, leeway in your contracting with that. The other thing, I, just, everyone has talked about the community working with the board. And I second that, I have, uh, been involved. I, I think it's really critical to do that, given many of the changes that are coming down, like, in the funding. And I see that as an opportunity for the board to work directly with other organizations in the community, even more than you have at this point. So I encourage you, I'm waiting, I'm here, you have my number, please reach out.
Good evening, Christian Cruz-Gerino, I'm a parent of a child at Derek Marshall. As of fall, Bradley, I am being held against my will to come up here and speak nicely about Joe Grillo. And so as I was thinking of nice things to say, there are many to say about Joe, I was thinking, as an Italian daughter, he's a little short. And I'm only, I'm only five nine, so, so when I look over at Mark, Mark, you know, most men don't meet there. So it's pretty good in this room, then Tom, you got this all, you got this all. But back in two thousand and twenty-three, we had the crazy idea, uh, the Asbury Park Tennis Initiative, the great tennis sports back in Asbury Park. And, uh, Joe really believed in that mission because he saw the important work that Aaron was doing with the youth, the Boys and Girls Clubs, uh, work that I have to go, so many in this room have supported over the years. Every week since two thousand twenty-three, there have been upwards of thirty kids every week learning the sport of tennis. And I thank you, Joe, and Julie, for your support in that, going to fundraiser, to making calls, educating the community on how this is for the students of Asbury Park. Um, and I also wanted to be here and speak for the board tonight. And thank you for what was discussed at the last board meeting, both here and I couldn't believe it here. But we appreciate the board's support. We especially appreciate Tom and everything that you've walked tooth and nail over the years, going on and on and on. Thank you. Um, and also, I want to especially thank Superintendent, uh, Acting Superintendent Gerbina, who met with us, uh, after getting into this role, and just really believes in the importance of sports education for the youth of Asbury Park and sees the vision and the impact that we have on the students of Asbury. So thank you to every single board member for your support, thank you Superintendent for your support. I look forward to all being together and celebrating these kids out of the tennis courts, learning tennis soon. Thank you, Joe.
I was going to, Mr. President. Uh, but since nobody else mentioned it, the early childhood advisory committee is still looking for parent engagement opportunities, um, especially as we're getting closer to September, remember looking to bring in pre-K parents and kindergarten parents, obviously, first in seventh grade, to make sure that the kids are able to get caught up and be ready for being to learn in third grade. So parenting engagement opportunities, if anyone's hosting a community fair or any kind of event, uh, where you might have a parent presence, um, reach out to Ms. Feldner, where she's still looking for youth and opportunities to camp with, parenting help. You? Anyway, it's been a pleasure to organize petitions for these last six years. Have a great day.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Stacy Exeter, and I represent, I do not represent this at all. I was here last time. I've been coming to these meetings for the past few years. And over, and over the few years, I've shared with the community how the students of Asbury Park grades have been altered. I've shared how the Asbury Park coach was thrown from the bottom of the football field. I've shared how the students couldn't pass basic skills. I've shared how there was, uh, an alleged, alleged, uh, alleged, allegedly that, uh, Superintendent for the vote involved in the case with them. I've shared how, how, uh, the students of Asbury Park wasn't receiving their high school diploma until the following year. I've shared about the corruption. I've shared there is two superintendents. I've shared with all the corruption that's been going on for the past couple of years, and all y'all looked me in my face and told me I was lying. The same stuff that I've been sharing for the past few years, y'all are now sowing each other in court. The same stuff that I was telling America that y'all dismissed and I'm lying, y'all are all in court, sowing each other. How is this even pretending to be? I have no idea, 'cause they're an afterboard, don't like me. I have no idea, 'cause they're an afterboard, refuse to, to vote with you. You're almost like you're office side control, nobody, uh, uh, local, and they're all sowing you. Only thing that I'm saying is that this is the whole new school year, and y'all, and y'all behavior last month, it was deplorable. It's unprofessional, having this virus. Y'all look like a bunch of clowns sitting on the board arguing with each other. And y'all supposed to be the leaders of Asbury Park? How could you get mad at the students for this behavior when the board cares about your behavior? I remind y'all, so all that, all you wanna do there is to put to do that, is a bunch of alone. Because behind those doors, nobody likes each other. Get what I mean? If y'all like each other, or y'all was actually, if y'all actually had more votes or asked it, y'all would be selling each other. How many laws do we disagree with right now? Who knows those for their swat, huh? Like y'all are gonna stand, not two forty years laughing at y'all. I know stopping laughing, I love it. But on that note, America, have a great day, and I know.
Hi, my name is Steve, and I was not planning on coming up here like Julie, but I wanna say it's an honor to speak out, because Joe, um, I've been living in Asbury for a few years, and for a while, I didn't really know much about it, only learned in politics and the school work, whatever. I work for nonprofits that brings STEM education to kids, so I'm always busy and there's never enough work to do. So we're running programs in Asbury, in Trenton, in New Jersey City, and Joe's like, how come you're not in Asbury? I mean, not in Asbury, and we can ask why we're not in Asbury. So, so I wanna thank Joe for always standing up for the kids. And one thing he did tell me was that, listen, we have problems on the school board, not everybody's gonna like everybody. He told me this, that everybody cares about the kids and it's always getting better. Every day gets better, every voting gets better. So I just wanna see if we can leave on that and tell you thank you for the opportunity you gave us to serve your kids in the district, thank you.
We gotta close with the president. Sorry, the board of committees. Finance?
Finance Committee, then, July sixth. Uh, we have struggled with the taxes in September. And whether or not any federal funds have been officially cut from Asbury Park. And we've not received the taxes in September from the state. But we also have not received any notification, any notification that federal funds have been cut. We reviewed ASISA on it and findings, and there are videos, measures that are being taken to improve efficiency. And, um, we also again reviewed the process by which, um, student registration occurs and residency in this area. The last thing that we reviewed was the, um, resume of individual for the, uh, treasurer's position.
While we're talking finances, uh, I'm gonna ask our board secretary, uh, to send to the board the outstanding federal funds that we made this, so we're all aware of what our shortfall is gonna be. Does everybody know our federal government has not released a lot of our educational funding, which we do not know when that will happen, if that will happen. We can talk about a government shutdown, but we would get that as we have to build finances this year. We want the community to know as soon as we know, uh, what our shortfall is gonna be right now. And what we may have to trigger in our response is to meet some of the needs of our community. So I want it all to be upfront and present as to what we need to adjust for and what our expectations are, so it's just things here. Next committee is athletics, we cannot have a meeting. But, uh, building grounds.
Mr. President, just a question for finance, so I was wondering about several items on the agenda were for changing account numbers, could we discuss the reasons why the account numbers were changed? Or did you, several of the changes on the agenda, um, must have happened, if, if that's the case?
No, we do not discuss that.
It was a thought that they charged us five line item instead of purchased professional services. So instead of two one nine, three twenty, we built a one nine. That's why the account number changed.
There were several, I just guess if, um, so just asking you how we can discuss those changes.
I'm suggesting to go through those changes as we go numerically through the, through the agenda. Okay, uh, next committee is the, uh, building and ground.
Buildings and grounds also got it July seventeenth. Uh, we have one use of facilities waiver, but it's withdrawn. We have told the applicant that we cannot do events on a Sunday, so they drew their request. Uh, we discussed the next steps for the sale of both the parent center, um, and maintenance property. And the steps are underway, uh, with, uh, the engineer and, uh, our lawyers in the South Bronx that are the parent center. We also discussed the status of the tennis initiative, um, that, um, that new superintendent Trupinoff met with the tennis initiative, walked around and came to an understanding of the addition of construction of the tennis courts.
I have a question about the building and grounds. Has there been any response or other information from the SDA about our ability? Or any hindrance upon our ability to sell any properties that the school has incorporated in other buildings?
Yeah.
The SDA?
Yeah, right now, uh, we want to refer on what we've done, talking about, so.
We talked about the, the New Jersey SDA, the, the entity.
Process, they're in the process of submitting the paperwork to get the approvals for the maintenance property sale, or that's what you're referring to?
Yeah, it's the last, the last that we, the last that we made update, we heard is that there was discussion. So we now identified the procedure where we can submit the request to the SDA and build without us. And do you know the timing on that?
Yeah, they, I do. No, well, explain right now, we had a problem issue to sort of, and we now put into paperwork for state to get convinced to clean the property itself. So, that's been done right now. The timeline, what, what is the accuracy of that?
Yes, just be, be, the entire board gets an updated email of, uh, status of the sale of these properties or if we need an executive session so that we are aware of the status and find out what about it over the meeting.
How can we do that? Um, they, we have been, we aren't too careful with them. They started possibly with the EDP, just meant everything, you know, as far as permitting wise, we're looking, hoping from soup to nuts, beginning of January till the start of the process, our product chain, the building numbers.
I appreciate that, yeah. I think my, my question was very specific about whether or not there are any conferences over our ability to sell it because of the SDA, is it what you think? So, we resolved that, right?
No, we did, and that building, certain maintenance building and parents building work at, yes. A.
Policy, right now, there's only one item policy that is in pouches, the, uh, regulations of how we're going to use it.
Mr. President, I had a comment about that. I, uh, was wondering, I don't know, um, the administrative staff, did somebody ask Strauss Esme to write up a policy we do pay them for? Because from what I saw attached to the agenda, yonder pouches right now, cell phone, uh, you know, the cell phone in school are not identified and some of the format, I think you should go over and see if Strauss Esme can actually update this, uh, policy so that it fits in the format that we're used to and the definitions and other statutes that should be included. If we could hold it, have somebody contact Strauss Esme, because I know, uh, I was in this SDA area, it's not longer, it's very, it's, who made it?
Yeah.
Well, this, she's the expert, she communicates with Strauss Esme and that's going to be paying to give us suggestions on policies. I, I have something to the district, where they kind of use Strauss Esme to, um, put pouches in certain areas where kids come to school. It's a similar thing that they should help on, if I can, uh, be just specific.
Yeah, we contacted Strauss Esme, they do not have a policy, yonder pouch, they have a cell phone policy. We use Strauss Esme when they have mandatory policies that need to come out, that they are going to update as far as yonder pouches, uh, the district in their own policy regarding that. So, uh, we, we can look at wording, that's not a problem, but policies are, they're even able to, the district decree their own policy the moment it's within the law. But again, Strauss Esme was contacted, maybe they do not have a yonder pouch policy, so wherever, wherever you go looking at as far as an example, they may have used whatever Strauss Esme may had as their cell phone policy and adding the yonder pouch policy to that, and that's basically what we're doing.
Yeah, maybe just that, specifically, there's just, yeah, just because you use Strauss Esme does not prohibit you from doing other things, uh, consistent with what you're doing.
I was just going to ask you, that's, how did, uh, is the process then have, uh, I shouldn't say, the attorney's draft, a policy for review? I'm, I'm not aware of what our procedure is.
Strauss Esme, general attorneys there?
No, I mean, I'm not aware of the process when we haven't used Strauss Esme. So, that, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of that, but ordinarily it would be either word to tell your attorneys what you wanted and we would send someone to you. And sometimes it is, it may not be considered where Strauss policy is, and then it was Strauss policy, and otherwise we might be starting something from scratch. Um, but that would be, I'm really specific on that.
We, we've been going over this for a couple of months. Is the form of these in now? The problem of where we was asked to forget a policy, now we have a policy, do we want to stretch this out?
We want to let you stretch.
Stretch this out? To ask that we, we had this policy, we wanted it, what is, what is the issue right now for the, when discussing this? Do you actually work on that?
All we did was give her an example of a policy where they put it in the lockers and stuff. Not that, that's not what we're going to do. But at the outline for policies, there are usually definitions, there's consequences, there's things that are included so that when any parent or student or staff member reads it, they know exactly what it is they need to do, they're responsible for and what, what the consequences are for not doing so.
Except even though this is one page long, I think it sets out the essential aspects of what is going to happen, how this is going to be done, how to put your phone in the pouch, how to get back out of the pouch, where you go in your way, what happens when parents need to reach students. It seems to me, even though it's bare bones, it addresses the essential things that have to be addressed. I don't see why we need a lengthier policy, um, just with a lot of words, when it's more important to get this process started so that kids aren't distracted by cell phones. I do, I think it's fundamentally adequate and I, I don't know, I don't know why we don't need it for our administrators to execute this.
Any, any good question that, I think what was the best of Strauss Esme, I understand correctly, is that there's some uniform, uniforming across the school districts, starters, and then also to provide some templates so that there's no issues with the policy, right? I mean, we're essentially telling the kids they can hand over their personal property when they get from school in the morning, and we're not handing back to them until they need. So, that's fine, but I think that, the, the only question that we brought up and that I had was just that whether or not it had been vetted by council and/or whether or not there was a template from Strauss Esme that would just give us a comfort level to know that we're not really proud of it.
And then Strauss Esme doesn't have that policy. We use sort of the template they, what they have and when we're wording, so we did follow their wording, uh, which did not work, if you're worried about the wording, we can actually have the attorney look at it. Uh, just so everybody knows, that the yonder pouch program has been a complete success in middle school and high school.
I think I agree with you, Mr. Trupinon, that study showed that they're very successful and I'm not doubting that, but I want to, just want to make sure that if something happens with the yonder pouch and, let's say, if I'm for, you know, replacing something or you broke something, and so we can do the policy so that there's no question as to, what the end result is, if you do damage, or how you call it, how it comes.
The students actually carry the yonder pouch with them, you know, anything, so they go take yonder pouch and they put it in their backpack.
Okay, uh, I think, uh, that was the last one. Oh, CNI, there, quick one. Sorry.
All right, yeah, I, uh, the CNI committee event last Wednesday, uh, we have, we have all, we did this, I'm going to go over everything, there were a couple of things that stood out. Uh, the IEDA, uh, uh, excuse me, grant is on this agenda, uh, that would, uh, amount to approximately $650,000 for the school district and about, close to $19,000 for preschool. Uh, we also put in for approval for the CTP, uh, again, um, grant, which would be about 25, $21,000 for our engineering system program. Two big items are, uh, on this program, it's the last page first, which was, I think we sent it to the board some time ago last week, the emergency virtual remote instructions program. We have to update every six months, so that is based on there. Um, made a couple of updates, like names of pages and other things, uh, just to make sure that we comply with the state mandates, uh, arrangements if we go into another kind of pandemic situation and have to go virtual. And then, yep, the last one, and again, please, I think I had this question, I think I had this question asked, was our move, our movement from, uh, New Jersey Virtual Schools to, uh, uh, edg, edgenuity. Uh, I think they sent you guys an update of some of the questions that came on at the committees, you guys can review all the information regarding why we want to make the move to this program.
There's one thing, Mr. Reeves, that we didn't have on the curriculum committee and was added was the, uh, event that the middle school preschool, that's the whole, um, back to school event. And I had spoken to, um, Mr. Franklin a little bit because I didn't understand, uh, what it was, and that she has two items on her agenda, uh, has to back packs, is that correct? It's going to that event and food that's being donated, uh, my logo? Um, because I, I was kind of confused because it really doesn't, you know, it says everything no cost to district, but I didn't know, um, what the items were or what was going on. So...
Yeah, Mr. Moss brought it in massive.
Just a little clarification so that board members are aware because it will come with the agenda item, we think it's some, but any additional we appreciate.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board, excellent. With regards to our summer slide program, uh, begins next Monday and that's academic. It will go from Monday to Thursday, the 27th, only, 27th of July to August 7th. The last day of the summer slide program, we're doing a culminating community event backpack giveaway. So, it, as a way to encourage the new incoming rising sixth graders that will be coming into the program, we invite the community, staff members and partners within the community to come partake in that. So what happened was, as you can put it, object, organizations, uh, such as the backpack organizations, they, uh, gave us a hundred backpacks to give away with school supplies and then, uh, Fusion Taco, uh, place that's locally said, hey, we're doing the food. So, that's why some of the pieces were late in forthcoming because there were last minute commitments that had to, we had to write a thank letter or solicit, uh, the donation. But it's a way to celebrate the summer slide. We have free reading books, there were hundreds of books at, uh, at the middle school that were brand new that, um, we found, so we can use that as well as, because we have few, uh, libraries in each classroom, these, these are books that, uh, don't cost the district that were just in boxes, brand new and we stacked our bookshelf. And we, uh, are going to give away books as well as part of the summer slide to encourage summer reading, these are paperback novels, uh, and really encourage, encourage music, fun, entertainment, uh, warm and inviting, uh, event for our, our staff. We, we are, uh, looking to have between 75, if not 100, community families, children across the K12 because the book bags are good for anybody, whether they're babies or, or high school students. So, it's a culmination and I just, I, I found, I worked about it at model schools that I went to back in, uh, DC, which is a conference, it's meant to just try to bring community to the school, try to bring acknowledgement to the school and then let some of the new parents get a chance to visit, come through, meet the staff, meet the principal, so we can prepare for, uh, what's going to happen in September when we receive, uh, two thirds of our board will be brand new students that will be coming from Rattler. So, that's really this was academic for the eight days and then this is celebration around academics that we're trying to, don't cost the district, so this is like donations, donations, et cetera. So, if you have some money donated, was it, uh, presented to the curriculum, uh, committee, Mr. Reeves, this A, I'm going to give the board know that this organization was donating to their halls.
I appreciate your explanation, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think it's a very, I just technically, though, I just saw for the board to approve the backpacks, you'll get every donor who contributed something, make sure we're contacting the backpacks.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And do doing that.
Uh, yeah, it's absolutely.
As well as employees who donate their time.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we want to invite all of our staff, I personally invite our staff to be there because we want our staff to show their faces and be visible for the students and the community and the parents. So, it's, and if anyone takes, uh, we're going to invite the pre-K, we're going to invite the other entities, the boys and girls, uh, you know, some of our providers that come, so they'll take, once again, that's our literature, uh, information, to get them to know what's going on at the middle school, meet the staff, meet the, meet the faces, meet the players at the middle school, just to make it a nice transition, et cetera. Thank you.
Uh, one other question, uh, uh, Mr. Dominique asked about Gera and I know you have spawned Gera. Can y'all give us what initiative is going to be coming with the new curriculum? How much more are you guys going to bring in Gera and with the possible? Well, I know it's not right now, but if you guys get a chance to email.
There's no, no course of Gera this evening, that's a college initiative, that's currently funded. Uh, yeah, we can give an update on that. Actually, I think Mr. Moss probably gave me an update, maybe a few months ago, so I will forward, I have an hour. Actually, I'll work the thing to give you a more, later update, and we also work at the high school as well, so, no problem.
Okay, uh, want to, uh, state monitor report?
Mr. President, the, the personnel committee met as well.
Oh, personnel committee then?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the personnel.
Personnel committee met on Thursday, July 17th, 2025, and we met to discuss the, um, personnel items that are on the agenda tonight.
Okay, we're going to do that in a second. Okay.
All right, Mr. Rogers, before the committees, um, all right, is there a plan? I think there's last minute, has to be a thoughtful for appointing placement from Sirolo on the several committees I think we've seen it on. Will we hear about that? When will we hear about that? So, before next month's schedule meetings, we should expect to hear about pre-appointments at least. Also, we might not have full committees for next month. I mean, if, if that's the case, would you please just get a schedule of all committee meetings for next month and then that way you guys can join, so we can, we can organize some meetings. Sorry, is that yes?
Will come to me.
Thank you very much.
State monitor report?
Board, uh, number four for tonight, um, community, my name is Sean Voice, I'm the new state monitor, as perhaps you and Mr. Rogers introduced me last week. So, board, I, uh, still getting myself up to speed, but I look forward to working with you in the upcoming year. Uh, and I think it's the superintendent, before I, so I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
He make, you what? Part of this tonight.
Okay, apparently, because it's pretty likely, a lot of information, uh, so, starting with district, uh, the Ms. Brenda appears, ESI, ESI summer school programs have been very student well attended, students showed up excited as well as the staff, and all great to her. Our early childhood department received a bridge grant from the state for $80,000. We are one of only two Monmouth County schools to receive this early childhood grant, and it was the second highest amount among all schools receiving a grant via the state. Building relocations have been completed with our summer program classes completed the day after the last day of school. Maintenance and stewardess have been doing this, we're doing the regular hours and are reducing overtime, I think only paid one, one staff member overtime, just two hours, which is the first. Buildings are on schedule for clean. Buildings are now scheduled for cleaning and prepared for the first day of school. M L K is being prepared to accept our six third students on the third floor of the M L K building. With desks and chairs being relocated relocated for Mariah and Bob and Lilith. While that is happening, we are consolidating central office rooms to the east side of the third floor to accommodate the increased population. Our administrative supervisors continue planning for the twenty five twenty six school care. The real highway retreat for last week of August, which will be held in the district to avoid paying the cost of renting the space and food. That'll be two days. This year we have for the future leadership academy for aspiring administrators and supervisors. This academy academy will consist of hands on learning, book reads and service projects have to be approved by the principals and central office. This practical representative at conclusion of the summer program is open to all district staff. We've met with the rebuilding ideas all about, we've met with the remediation company. This week that was strong work on cleaning up the soil that the parent make a shop to sell. This work could begin sometime in August and possibly be completed by the end of the calendar year. Therefore, the chairman will make a start building up for sale. We are meeting with an architect to discuss building a home barn that to house our means farming trucks and supplies. This will be a new place. We are still exploring the option of an improvement with the city part of the share of the home barn used and also cost share. Third Marshall. Twenty five twenty six plan is complete for the year with third Marshall's school theme of on the road act of success. Majority of student growth. Building schedules, staff, room assignments and structural alignment of a hundred or a hundred percent complete with the A S B goals focused on increased growth in the L A and met and decrease in student behavior through a focus of P P S I S. The summer curriculum committee has spent the month of July in inventory material on preparing the curriculum for staff. Bradley Elementary School, the current their building's counter of creativity, relative glory, creative school preschool students. Will allow preschool preschool students will allow families to dive into a hands on ocean adventure. Our best will experience culture, see experience, see what the movement wishes to score on with some this interactive summer program encourages and add imagination, gross motor skill and problem solving. Make them learn about sea light and exciting and verbal experience. The final piece of program will occur on August fourth from ten to eleven, everyone is invited. Preschool classes over the summer are pirating, heavily phonological awareness and also using music to increase letter sound knowledge so that the little divisions are more prepared for the upcoming school year. The program is providing consistency, structure and academic challenge learning environment incorporated in the summer theme. Every Thursday, parents are invited to participate in K Y D S program called Together We Bring. The thirty minutes session for four weeks focused on strengthening bonds, building emotional resilience and creating less than calm together. The preschool preschool original program has sixty seven students enrolled this summer. As of July two thousand twenty five, preschool enrollment for two thousand twenty five twenty six school year has reached one hundred and eighty nine students, a significant increase from one hundred and forty one in July of two thousand twenty four. And now the school year twenty four twenty five. The growth of forty eight students reflects the strong community demand and represents the equivalent of the more than two and a half additional classrooms, hence the move to grad. The upward trend highlights the success of the early childhood programs and the growing confidence that we have in hiring schools. Bradley Elementary School hosts the University of Florida's youth flight five professor development program together over twenty five hundred meters from pre K through seventh grade, including parent professionals for intensive six hour training. This research based explicitness is an ideal instruction which teaches with proven strategies to build stronger readers. As a result of implementing this program this past year, kindergarten students have shown a significant improvement in coding and encoding skills with eighty percent of those students now reading on or above grade level. That's the first. This professor development incentivizes our community through not elevating literacy outcomes through high quality teacher training. On one of sixteen that Bradley Elementary School will host, local host, there's some school registration events on the turf. There will be food, games, prizes along with fun stations that showcase our amazing school, amazing school programs. Excellent for families to learn about the A P curriculum. Meet our teachers to get budget for a man and task school year. We have the early childhood department having hosted some pop up play dates every Saturday since last fall. And they'll be at Bradley Elementary School playground this Saturday from eleven to twelve P M. And pop up skirt dates will also be held at the A P library and that's been going on since the weather got cold. Eighty year old child department hosted at the A P library on July twelfth, family literacy workshop on the importance of most of the lines of reading. This was a fun workshop to help families with the tools and confidence to do this at home. M L K's summer learning opportunities. How do you use why some told for E R live students? E R live program we just started this year and it's been a success and it's helping our students tremendously. And it's helping strengthen reading, writing and problem solving skills, so there is no summer slot. Summer slot dimension program is running from July twenty fourth to August seventh. Focus on reading and literacy, math, religion, social, emotional learning. Middle school educators beyond the class of D L A, primary mathematics are hard work this summer to ensure a strong academic foundation for the upcoming school year. Revised curriculum guides for grades three through eight and that in D L A. Our curriculum guides drive our construction. High school, the Dr. Academy group camp is running this summer. Our big A G S, big A G S future Dr. Academy students, rising high graders participated in two week D L A map group camp to sharpen their skills as well as work on their peer relationships and bond before the start of the school year. A representative from the New York Department of Education witnessed and complimented the students and the teachers going to this convenient writing intensive project that was focused on identifying and exploring emotions. The A P S summer school is at the Hamblay Markham summer school. There are seventy students at one point or another who have completed over sixty classes credits and gave credit to help them become graduation ready and eligible to participate in sports reform. We currently have four more students how to play and more will become part of the summer. We have three students have successfully completed completed the graduation requirements and will now be considered always graduates. Two more students are just a few more seconds away, completing their coursework and will be recorded as graduate as well. And lastly, I have a quote I want to read, I don't know who the quote is mine. I took some way just to change the word of you to we, because this applies to all of us. We are unfinished working problems. One of the challenges is that we get to find out that we are capable of being far more than we ever thought possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Dana, I'm sorry, I I didn't care to say two students, I heard you say two students were already finishing up.
We have five students that already finished up. We have two more students that still in broke that will finish up and be I I still glad.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dominique, I want to thank you, one of the key uh things in your agenda is uh accentuated training. You said, and I've known, I've talked to a lot of this staff over the years and they have always talked about there was a lack of training uh and resources and them to learn to build so they can be better teachers. So I'm seeing you putting that on the forefront is one of the greatest things that we need because in order for this district to grow, you have to advance our our training, our our staff. And right now, we come up to money as the biggest issue. Uh but sometimes I think you have to, you have to spend a little bit, which you're not. But we're getting that, getting that old action done, so I appreciate that. Also, uh next year, so it would be early, can you actually reach out to the high school uh principal to get us a student representative so we're ready to accept?
So. Yeah, yes, that's on my agenda, my escape, my personal, so that can be the uh we can watch.
Thank you. Okay, next, we want to acceptance of the minutes. I like a motion to accept our minutes.
All right. We believe we're talking about A two and twelve, A through that, incorrect.
Yeah, A two F.
Captain, you had some gender correction, I mean uh man correction?
Yep.
Both their second, second.
You can just say, make comments with questions and your comments and what I've seen. Oh, no, not for those. Okay. Did you, I thought we'd do that in the executive session now. You know, here's the pop up minutes. So I think we're talking about May seventh minutes now.
No, I think it wasn't, I think the agenda, uh the motion was for all minutes or any? All minutes, so.
All right, so the topic might um. I don't have any comments from May seventh, sorry, I have comments for the corrections for May twenty two and twenty six. Do you have those? The regular minutes, yes. Do you have those now? Yeah, thank you. So on May twenty second, the executive session items are missing. I think just identifying and discussing executive session twenty seven. Um item B eleven sub J should list me as abstaining. Right, or May or May twenty second. Uh, May twenty second, correct. Item uh B eleven sub J, item abstained. Um items C two and C three also for May twenty second, should list me as a yes. Item C four should list me as abstaining for May twenty second. And item C twelve should listen as a yes. Um I have four, sorry, any other comments from May twenty second?
I jumped, jumped in on the May twenty second. I have a reader will do, the one we talked about, have state travel on May twenty second, C. I'm sorry, I think it was C eighteen, put it up, state travel.
I have a thing to add.
Okay, thank you.
On June twenty sixth, for um. For the item regarding the vote as to allow Ms. Clark and Dr. Penya to join by the vote. Um I just like to clarify, I'd say that I voted yes, but I would like a note added to the agenda just to clarify some comments that were made earlier to state that my concerns regarding the vote for that we haven't followed the full policy because no notice had been provided to the board. They had requested that courtesy, but I did vote yes, so thank you for capturing that.
And we did comply with the policy.
You actually did not because they did not, we had no notice of it on that meeting, so we.
We did, and 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 Mr. Weiss confirmed that at the meeting, so.
Um, I apologize for the interruption. Um for June sixth, twenty sixth, um I did make a comment on record regarding my extension. Um can I just email you the exact terms I pulled it from the transcript earlier today, just so you don't have to transcribe up? Uh do I need to repeat them now for the record and you just provide my email? As you did for your vote base number. Um it doesn't have, and then item is the vote as to the doctrine of necessity is after, I think, item four. Okay. Um and then further as the June twenty sixth agenda, items B one through B ten should list me as abstaining. I'm just saying yes, but should I almost say abstaining, please? Do we need to amend the motion to accept the changes or do we need to leave the table? You can just admit that the the question was, was, does anyone else have any comments? Because all of them will put on all of the the minutes for put up their exceptions to the next question. And the group finishes, is anyone else have any corrections on Mr. Flora? I've known this very early, have any comments, does anyone else? And then we just do a motion to amend or accept the question.
Do you read the motion? I didn't, you want to amend the motion to accept the question?
Sorry.
So I'm in here.
Amendment to accept, amendment to accept the question and Marvis.
All right.
So the motion is to accept the minutes as amended, I mean amended.
Sure.
The second one?
Yes.
Ms. Halliwell?
Yes.
Ms. LaRocque?
Yes.
Mrs. Senski?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes, for all the extra minutes and abstaining from all close second minutes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I uh yes, one all except for May twenty second.
Thank you.
Okay, so make a motion to go to executive.
I'll make the motion, go to executive.
Second.
Roll call.
The second, yes. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. LaRocque?
Yes.
Mrs. Senski?
Yes.
Ms. Lastone?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, you can go to the chairman of the board.
Roll call, roll call, bring it back.
I need a person.
Number two?
Second.
Roll call, roll call.
The second?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. LaRocque?
Yes.
Mrs. Senski?
Yes.
Last one?
Yes.
Ms. LaRocque?
Oh, that's um. That's fifty six. I would uh I'd like to ask.
Oh, we just uh we just we just figured.
That's what he's gonna do, consent agenda, B one, B eight, okay, will be six and an eleven. Yeah.
So for corrections, consent agenda for B one to B eight, is the doubt that B eight actually says B two, so.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Shmiron, I didn't hear, I apologize.
That's okay. No, no, I consent agenda for corrections. B one to B eight, but page B eight says B two, so you have.
Oh, I see, okay, so you're just presenting them for our little. But then we're also removing ten and eleven, okay? I think ten and eleven, okay.
I'll make that a motion. Second. We do have a couple of questions. Um I noticed on the agenda, on the first two pages, we have a new position. A new position for the ERI and, um, another position in the middle school, uh, special teacher, and another preschool teacher, Bradley, all J, all in at top steps. I was, uh, wondering, um, for the, uh, person with preschool, uh, Shannon Steenland, or she's not in the building, correct, she's in, correct? That's her.
And she's coming in at step 17 MA at ninety, almost ninety-seven thousand dollars, do, what's her experience?
Uh, I have to look at that to be honest with you, but she does have many years' experience, okay? In good reason, three K, you can use all the work.
Do we know how much experience, if you're in the school district, before you get that over?
I would have to look at the guide.
I mean, it, it's just been my...
It's about that.
It's just been, um...
And I'm just saying, that is three, three K money?
Right, not, not the money as much, I, I've run into issues where people coming in for me, how to stop it. If, if you don't, if you don't run the, the salary guide, resentment arises from people who have been in the district and are then making less. So that, that's why I asked the, the question, I mean, yeah, and so that was the concern.
And then, my question goes to, well, number C also, because they're coming in, uh, almost on step 13, what, question 72, step 13 at ninety thousand. And then...
Well, I'd like to see, um, that's a teacher.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Already here.
Yeah, that's a teacher already here, oh, I know, I'm gonna ask. So, is, Ms. Young was reassigned, was she on a previous agenda, or is this, she's not on this agenda, was she reassigned already on another agenda, you know?
Yes, she was assigned, um, and then, we had the, the job description that was out that we had, didn't match the state required, so we fixed it, and so now she's in that position, that's the first.
So, and then a preschool instructional coach, this is only what we have, correct?
No, we have two.
But according to state regulations, that can't happen more than one, if you have, do you have more than 20 classrooms?
Y-yes, I think the, the state regulations says, they, they don't, it's not mandated that you only have to have one, it's a suggestion. That's already been noted by, uh, us in that, with the job.
We checked, I was just reading something today, not that I know, but it says the ratio can be no more than one to 20 classrooms.
I appreciate that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, um, the other two teachers also on F and G, they're at step 13 and 14, that's a ninety-three thousand and ninety-four, five, they're also being brought in, and... That's what my concern, I see, is on the preschool, on LaRocque.
Yeah, the, that's for special, uh, ERI is a specialized certification, um, so they're not very easy to obtain, that's where our ERI program got recreated. And now the guy at the high school, he has several students from middle school up to high school, that's why we, that's why we have teaching, but, uh, yeah, they, they, those teachers, and when, when the teachers came in, and, uh, my job, we told ERI, and he said, no, then, that's not an easy class to teach.
Is there a special job description for a special teacher in ERI, or is that the same, you just give them more money, but they don't require anything?
It's, it's the same, we need special train, uh, you, you have to be trained.
So, we don't have a job description?
No, they're a teacher.
For teacher?
They're a teacher.
For ERI?
They're a teacher guy, they're not a specialist, so they're on teacher.
You know, the other question I had, and I know the ERI is meant to be a benefit to all students in the school district, and it's supposed to be collecting, you know, savings, but, um, but with the addition of some of these staff orders, where probably up to three hundred or more thousand dollars, and I was wondering... If we evaluate the program to see if we've saved enough to actually make it worthwhile presently financially, that, you know? That's, that's what my concern is, because I know we lost a student apparently to our ERI program from an outside preschool, we only have three students, except for the other one.
I'm not aware of that, but we had two people sign up, yes.
So, we have...
And possibly a third one for motion.
So, I just wanted to, if we could just be evaluated, just make sure that what we're doing is actually going to save us money and, and, you know, make sure there's going to be a dent in our budget, because we do have, you know, side specialty.
Agreed, so it costs us approximately one hundred ten to one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars to send these students out to another district. So, just in that alone, the students are staying in, we're saving an exorbitant amount of money, uh, and then also bringing students in that are paying tuition. Uh, obviously, we can't charge one hundred ten, one hundred thirty-five thousand, but the students that we have in-house, I mean, normally sent out, or probably saving close up to three hundred thousand dollars.
No, interesting, because I'm not, I would hope for the fourth one, I just, we have to be evaluating.
You're right, so that's, that's what I'm telling, that's the evaluation, that's what I'm telling you, that we're saving, the students that we normally send out.
Yeah, other question I had, um, for the preschool, I think it's still been in two, this is, this is messed up, because you add extra classes. Um, I, it's how, the preschool, the, the budget, the account numbers are out of the, the general budget. Is, if it's preschool summer nurse, does that get paid out of, gets paid out of the head funds?
Three K bucks, three K bucks. Uh, oh, not for the summer, okay.
Okay, not summer, not, okay, great, thank you. The other question I had, I know it's going to bring up this first subject of sidebar agreements, and I think we should look at this also, um, is the beforehand preschool supervision, uh, position is not a sidebar, quote, quote, regular, it's not a quote, regular position on the 2025 CBA, so we don't have sidebar, we have, I just wanted to bring that up, although we do have, you know, attention advisor, user advisor, we have the great class, and it's, it's, but this after school supervision is not on the, um, quote, regular list, or the, uh, see, we have, I didn't see.
Yeah, the, both positions have been, uh, in place.
I know we've used it, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, is, there's no, it's not on the, uh, I don't know if that times, just to make sure.
Okay, yeah, hold on, we'll look at that, but again, these positions have been replaced for, yeah, for longer than I...
No, no, I don't, it's, um...
I don't, I don't, any...
On B5, three, the, um, I was concerned about the one-on-one teacher A being reassigned, I guess, that means, uh, they're going to a different student. When you reassign a one-on-one, the, do the students and the parents know you're going to be changing them, or they advise before you make those changes? Because I know they're very, they're very important to a student and to a family of his one-on-one, I was wondering if they were actually...
Yeah, all specialized, um, teams have, that, and families are also, they're building their children.
Okay, so the, the parent and the student do know about this?
So, even while you're doing that, I'm sorry, we're, we're going to jump back and look at sidebar agreement to include all those down descriptions. Like, you, I think you were saying, they've been, they've been...
It's, it's, it's in, it's in there, it's actually on the guide, in the body of the contract.
Oh, it's in the body.
Like a finished case, uh, it's only in the body, they, they, this is not the back there. Yeah, it's not the back there, so this has been placed for...
Oh, it's in the body, it's, it's kind of like the one with the, the house, it's in that area?
Yes.
Oh, I appreciate that, I, I can find it on, 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 thank you for your contribution.
Any more questions?
Yeah. Uh, yes, um, a question about age, uh, which is substitute nurse versus, and I'm not exactly sure of the number, it is the VNA agreement. Is there a reason why we need both the substitute on call, and then we're also engaging with the VNA to provide substitute nursing, or are they put these up for projects, it wasn't quite clear?
They are for separate.
Okay, how, how separate, what is the VNA?
Present.
I, I get what a substitute nurse is, what is the VNA, what's the VNA?
VNA will also, also, if they have that, an asset issue.
So...
They always have someone on the...
So, okay, so you're appointing a substitute nurse? And also engaging with the VNA?
Yes.
In the event she's not available?
Yeah, or in other, because we have four buildings, so it could be possible, two nurses not being available.
Understood, um, and so for the VNA, you don't need a front seat as a substitute station?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you, first thing.
Any more questions?
Uh, yes.
I just want to clarify, with the very first appointment, we're saying new, uh, but it's actually, the money's coming from a con, the money's in the budget, we don't have to look for new money. It's coming from a contractor that is now going to be an employee, and just want to correct that, and so we've got that, uh, in the record, we're not looking for new money, correct?
Yeah, both of them, it's already mine.
Um, uh, I think, now one, that's, uh, we've got B2, B2J, now. How, how do we get to seventy-one dollars an hour? That's, that's even beyond that.
J, you say?
Uh, B2, uh, right.
B2J?
J, J, if I could just, yeah.
That's a negotiated agreement, yes, a negotiated agreement. Some things are forty-one dollars, some things are forty-one thousand, some things are having to be per diem, and this is one of those things that have to be per diem.
In the contract, it says one seventh of the salary, one seventh, sorry.
Just the difference between the step forty-some dollars and, yeah, that's, this is the difference to a certain amount of time.
And, and because it's a per, per diem, they, they're working for that day, it's seventy-one dollars an hour.
And I'm not expert in this, it's based on the salary, so if we have someone being forty thousand, that would be a lot less, as opposed to someone being ninety-six thousand, which would be a lot more, because it's divided by the salary.
Or ten month, not four.
Uh, how many hours do you unit per, so, let's say they're making a hundred thousand? To divide that, uh, what is the hourly total hours for the year?
Well, it's not, you know, it's, it's not, it's just working on a salary, it's just working day, not from C, five hours, and then...
Right, and I'm trying to get to the...
And this is something that we do.
How they, how they divide, and if it's one seventh of a salary, to get to seventy-one dollars a year.
So, what's it told on the notary seat, do we have a notary seat on that item? Doesn't say notary seat, working days, what's the amount like? Five hours, and fourteen days, and seven.
What can you add to the, but, I don't know, maybe I'm the only one to give seventy-one?
There's left of, is four thousand. So, this one, for the salary, going to see four thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy cents.
Right, okay, it's hard for me to... Uh, but, like, I, when I was doing this thing in a, in a non-school environment, I, I divide the yearly salary by two thousand hours, do, do we have some kind of approach when, when we compute this, that we divide, and let's just assume, um, the counselor is maybe a hundred thousand? Divided by how many hours would give us an hourly rate?
There's so many, there's so many workdays, and then, there's so many hours in the day, and then you have, it's not good.
So somehow that, the day is actually getting short.
Right, because, um, looking at a contract, I can sort of, but it's definitely in the negotiated agreement.
It's one seventh, it's one seventh.
And then I will say, I will say, stepping one dollars an hour for a highly skilled guidance counselor to come in over the summer is, I think, even on the low end, there are districts that pay more than that per hour, who have their highly skilled professionals come in over the summer to do this work. They are salaried as ten-month employees, so when they come in for the summer, the negotiated agreement dictates whether it's a percent or a fraction of their salary, or whether it's just a set dollar amount for everyone per hour, it's in the agreement, because they're coming in for time that they are not contracted for, because they're only ten-month employees. You got, you got a rule of salary, it's ten months, please? Its guidance counselor shall be compensated at a rate of one seventh of the individual worth daily rate of make hours work in the summer.
Right. Okay, one seventh.
Yeah, just don't, the other aspect of the equation, for instance, that would be...
So, figure out what their salary, figure out, you know, whatever the salary is, and then you figure out the daily rate, which is also probably defined in the contract, I don't know if it's one one-eightieth or one two-hundred, um, and then you would figure out whatever the one-seventh of the daily rate, which would then be, this would be one thirty, whatever, salary. It's nine, four, five, three, five.
We use two hundred or something, for ten months.
One, two hundred, right?
What's the salary setting?
Nine, four, five, three, five.
Divided by two hundred, gives us four hundred and seventy-two dollars, divided by seven, is a little off there, giving, hold on, say the salary again?
Nine, four, five, three, five.
So, that's a, yeah. Oh, no, so sorry, that's LaRocque, hold on, hold on.
Might be, what is it, two sixty-three, workday, hundred, workdays, or something like that? It's two hundred exactly?
It's probably one, two hundred, right, that's pretty common, or something.
Uh, okay, hold on.
Yeah, but I, I know what this is.
Your salary, I have your salary, it's ninety-nine, eight, thirty-five.
Ninety-nine, eight.
Thirty-five. Divided by two hundred is four ninety-nine a day, divided by the seven is seventy-one dollars and thirty-one cents per hour.
Thank you for, now you got that, so, well, now we won't, well, sorry.
That's why, um, the math is real.
I love that.
Can I just make a note that on that account number, seven, on sixteen, not ten?
Sixteen?
Yep. Uh, I wanted to just clarify, not one, two, we have listed this, for Dan Reed, as for the twenty-five, twenty-six CBA negotiated agreement, should that be twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes.
So, actually, twenty, forty-five.
Twenty, twenty, thirty, forty-five.
Yeah, forty, forty. The one, you do twenty-five, not going to twenty-six.
Yes.
Um, and then, on, uh, letter, sub I, the twenty-two, twenty-five, the school nurse, program nurse, we have voted to appoint Mark Moreno to that position, is this a change in employee, or an additional nurse assignment program? Additional, is that included in the budget?
Yes.
And then, on page B3, letter L, are we, is this hiring an additional assistant wrestling coach, we didn't have a athletics committee, it's not so good a ask, but we have appointed Eric Schneider on the May 22 agenda. We didn't have a athletics coordinator, it's not so good a ask, but we have appointed Eric Schneider on the May twenty-two agenda.
We, to, where this works, high school, you have a coach, an assistant coach, and in the middle school, that coach called an assistant coach. So we have a middle school head coach, but it's under assistant.
Yeah, and Mr. Schneider was appointed as an assistant coach in high school.
But thank you, it's good for middle school.
Oh, it's middle school?
But they're in the changeable, the coaches are in changeable.
I don't think it, does it say that?
Does the site been the same for the high school, middle school?
I believe it is, yes.
Can we just check to make sure that it has to be changed when we go?
So would we vote to approve that one with the change that it represents in the school?
Yes. That gentleman's also using, using teacher in middle school.
And then, same thing on animal, it was animal legal, but it's still there. Sorry, the clock operator and site manager, we usually have multiples? Okay.
Yes. Just to clarify, so you have a clock operator, is this up?
Yeah, yeah, just to say that, no.
Yeah, so you thought we explained this, uh, site manager, you know, everyone's around, takes care of the officials, teacher, teams, and all that stuff.
Yeah, so usually at different places, so we have multiples, it's how we need to...
Yeah, you can't, the clock operator for the game has to be up there, and the site managers, sure, the user, my squad, teams, taking care of them, that stuff.
Yeah, but I'm saying we have two clock operators and two site managers, because...
Yeah, yeah, and they don't work at the same time, so they're, aren't really...
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
I have a question.
I'm all done, thank you.
Mr. Ri, Mr. Rives?
Yes.
This is Mrs. Ricks, I have one question.
Yes.
May I proceed?
Yes.
Okay, on B six, aisle fifteen, why are we replacing New Jersey Virtual School with EH New Achee platform?
Yes, we are replacing it because it's a more vibrant and feature-rich platform that allows us to do more, and also allows us to offer courses that we can't do with New Jersey Virtual Schools. So it expands our ability to offer different courses for our students. For instance, if we wanted to offer an AP course, we can do that, do that program. And it's a, it's one course, one price, and it covers all our students, whereas in Jersey Virtual Schools, depending on the course, it could cost between six hundred and thirty-five dollars per course per student. So we're paying separate costs, there was an email that we sent out earlier today, of this Ricks, that drags everything down for you, a really, really detailed email that really tells you the difference in cost between Jersey Virtual Schools, what we paid, what we were paying versus Edge University. And, and the flexibility of the platform to offer our high school students.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Mr. Reese, do we have AP courses present?
We, we do not, and that's one of the things we want to be able to offer as well.
But the board has to approve these courses, has that been, as it's not...
No, and that's, well, we, we don't, we are not going to, until we do that, we're trying to bring the program in, but that's the next step, but we have to have something we can offer that.
Have you, has anybody spoken, I know I asked the committee, and he didn't have an answer, and did anybody speak to, or ask about if you had some adjustments you wanted to make, whether they have those courses, or whether they could adopt those courses, is that a question?
No, they didn't, they, the courses are set, the prices are set as they are, and they don't offer the level and/or the amount of courses that we can get from any university.
So someone had a conversation?
No, but we, we researched, we researched both programs to look into that.
I think, I know that we do use credit recovery extensively in our high school. Have we thought about trying to, what you call the corrective action plan? To try to find out the reasons we're not finishing the courses, or the reasons we have to make up credit, try to reduce costs to the district, regardless of what form you use to recover, grab, you know, credits online, or whether it's classes in the summer that are given by teachers? Have we come up with some sort of process to try to eliminate the number of students that have to do it? Save us a lot of money, probably a lot more than any of these...
A lot of what we're dealing with is still residual, the last batch of students coming out of the pandemic. So a lot of the students, a lot of the way we had to do credits for them is very different than what we're, we're normally accustomed to. You were given, there was so much leave waiting to the state, and it's been all districts, about how to give to those students. So a lot of kids need to go to school, so those kids have to make up, those kids have had to make up credits. We're like down to the last group of students that are finishing up. But yes, there are, there have been some, like for instance, during the winter period, during the high school, to help kids to make up credits during that time, so that we're not doing it at, after school, like even during the summer. But as high school students needing credits, seat time, all those things can become a little complicated as well, because students are working, you guys, students that are, not coming to school all the time. But I think the numbers have improved over the last couple of years, but this is a process, we're trying to get, get students to do this program. But I understand what you're saying, so I'll engage the high school principal about what are some of the things, and have him report out to you all, what are some of the things we've done over the last year and going forward, so that we can find some of our students that need credit recovery. It's very important that students stay on course and on time, because if they stay on course and on time, that also saves us, with teaching, having open new sections, because we have a number of students who are behind in high school and so forth, we have to do, let's say, I'll do one a second time. So these, these have to, so I understand what you're talking about, but I think you're right, that we have to really be very diligent about making sure students stay on course and on time, because that makes it a lot easier for us as to move forward, and save us money ultimately, not just for credit recovery, but it saves us money also, because then we don't need as many staff to cover the sessions needed to make up the courses that students didn't finish or fail. So it's a multi-layered thing, and I, I think you're right, so that's, I'll engage the high school principal on that.
Yeah, I'm concerned, because I know that the New Jersey Virtual Schools, their summer school percentage of completion and success rate for the twenty, I think it was a twenty-three, twenty-four school year, was eighty-eight percent, so it's a very successful program. And it's one that the students are used to and the staff, so I'm concerned about switching at this point, and hoping to eliminate the number of students, of reducing the number of students needing credit recovery, therefore, and I know this format, you don't have specific, like if a bunch of teachers, students need teacher intervention, you have additional costs that aren't included until you know what is, what you need to pay for, that's not included in just the licenses you're getting right now. So that's my other concern.
Yeah, I hope also that the new program, many who even hope us, based on the state, are moving to the new program, getting away from New Jersey Virtual Schools, and what we're looking to use in the future. So we're actually, we're actually ahead of other places, like Moes, to implement this program. And I understand what you're saying, it's a change, but basically better for our students.
Yeah, I understand, Moes is integrating with the Genesis, which is a format we use at this school, this one. The Genesis.
I'm not, Genesis, I don't like Genesis.
No, no, but part of the program, they're, they're doing a software conversion, I think they're starting to use Genesis also as a credit student program, so that was another thing that I will look at more.
The SIS is kind of, it's kind of independent, I mean, we just, that's where we, there's our school information system, so.
I would say that credit recovery, we use Genesis for the student grades and all the student names and this sort of programs, being able to use that Genesis as an integration also. Moes is starting to use that student integration, is that similar?
This is, this is, you know, your staff, Barbara, Barbara is right on this situation. Yes, Barbara is right on this situation. Will we be able to get an analysis for the students that, in this year, what the credit recovery is going to look like, how many things for the next two, three years, and if there's a, so we get a conference call, I know it's overburdened, but at least we know by September, October, maybe kind of the course.
Yeah, I think a number of students that we project will need credit recovery.
Okay, any other questions?
Sorry, HP seven, I'm seventeen, I don't see that agenda in the materials. I don't think I per se have any concerns about survey or practice, but I didn't see the agenda.
Yeah, it was on the curriculum agenda in the district.
So can we table that until we're all able to see it?
Or did the curriculum review it and have something said? I'm on one of the committees for committee affairs.
It was some just minor lawyer talk, that they just updated a few definitions or something, don't know.
I think it's okay.
Okay, any, any other questions? Any other questions in the family? Go on.
Second one? Yes, I'm voting... For B, B, I want, I'm voting, wait, I want, so sorry, HP one, I don't want, under that appointment. I'm voting, voting yes, except for... No, sorry. Let me do it this way, I'm voting no on one B, no on one C, any more information? And then yeses to the rest of B one, so only no on one B and one C, yeses to the rest of B one. And then... Yes, as to B two, B three, B four, B five, B six, B seven, are we taking B seven on the other pouches, pouches pending attorney review, or should I see? With policy? That one was with, with that.
We're going to be using the option there right now, next year, because they're successful.
I mean, we would, if we want to ask the attorney for due...
Okay, so table it, pending?
No, I would, I would ask it, or we can still ask.
All right, I mean, put me on, abstain on B seven. B six, number seven. Uh, HP six, I am number seven. Yes, yes, as to eight, nine, twelve, abstain on thirteen and fifteen on HP seven. Yes, as to sixteen. Abstain as to seventeen. No as to eighteen. Yes, as to nineteen and twenty on P eight. HP seven, thirteen is a yes. Uh, thirteen is an abstain. Thirteen and fifteen abstain, oh, thirteen is a yes. No as to eighteen. And I'm sorry, seventeen is abstain. Thank you. Ms. Warren?
Yes?
We have four notes, I said, from the following, I'd like double checking on one B and one C, voting no.
Just one, one Steve, one Steve, she's already staffed in district, she's been moving over, no increased salary, just moving over to...
Oh, one C was in district, it was only one B, it was only one B from outside. I think, I think I misled some people, and I screwed up. Then just on B, to double check the salary guy, has that outside appointment? I do want a B six, number seven, an attorney review of that policy, we can, pending that, I would vote for it, so that's enough, I guess. And, and that, when that data you refer to, I'd like to see all of that data before we make the decision to change the technology, feel like that could be of... That's enough, those are my...
B seven, B seven.
I've got three notes, so this is your main threat, I think.
B seven, fifteen on, and can you put your voting go on?
Yes. And yes on everything else.
All right, let's see, Mr. LaRocque, so we can just give you the no's for our sections. On B one, no on one B. B two, F and G, I would vote no, not simply because I think, without qualifications, I don't have a salary. I'm going to, everything else, so for the E S, until we get to B five, number three, I'm going to vote no on the one, one, I just have an issue with changing the, please. Do you need another, number three, and then B five, number three, is that correct? Moes, okay. Then we go to B seven, we'll vote no on the change in virtual, it's number fifteen. And I'm going to go back to B six, number seven, the policy of abstain, we want to see a more refined version of that policy. And everything else, if you guess.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks? Ms. Ricks?
I, abstaining from Virtual School in Edge New Achee, I'm abstaining from that. And as I understand, the change in that has been reviewed?
Yes.
On B six?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm abstaining, from, from what I just said, everything else, I'm voting yes.
Thank you. Ms. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rives?
Yes.
Make a motion for B seven, can the C one, C eight? Make a motion for B seven, gender C one to C eight. Lost.
Any questions, any questions in the room?
Uh, I just have a comment, I'm meant to recuse myself of anything having to do with award or drawing award from anything that appears on the agenda. I'm rewarding it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have a question on number thirteen, the uh, contracting, the special contracting. Um, I want to understand, this um, consulting is for the principals only, is that what they did, the leadership for the principals only? Is that, uh, number thirteen, uh, it was Bobby Ashley consulting that you're giving the contract to? I believe that was a person.
That's correct, that's being paid out of SID funds.
And that's the person that did it last year, is that correct?
That's awesome.
Did we did an evaluation of the program to see, uh, cause I'm not quite sure what, what they do and between this year and last year, you're talking about what, hundred, two hundred and forty thousand dollars in two years, I'm quite concerned about that, cause last year I think was a hundred something.
Yeah, I believe he's paid him, he was coming back by seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars.
What, what does he do?
Excuse me?
What does he do?
Uh, he's working, he works with our administrators, he works with our teaching, with our leadership teams, uh, and it, it, it's improving instruction throughout the district. Teachers are, you know, getting job invented, BD and help with all that, improving principals and supervisors.
Is there, is there an overview of what he accomplished last year and coming the hours, cause I don't, from what I understand from his contract, he travels from state to, correct?
Yes, that's on, got it, we assume to call us that.
Well, well, all right, I just said, I think I have one question. On the, page C three, number seven, the alternate bathrooms? Who's school, oh, it's at Bradley, is that to do with the smaller bathrooms in the preschool program? They can do that.
Do we have the retrofitted toilets for that school today? Or not, pardon, is this?
Uh, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going.
I'm just wondering, Career Center, what, I'm familiar with those other names and that sounds, it sounds like some students with significant R E Ps maybe getting vocational.
Career Center is vocational school.
Oh, it's, it's the county vocational school that we said.
Yes, he keeps calling it Career Center.
Oh, got it, thank you.
I have one more question about this, um, on special services departments, number four, C seven. Now that we have a behavioral therapist or analysis person on staff, do we need another consultant to do the same job, could we find out if this individual needs assistance now that we have a full-time person and then come back, can we be consultant?
What number?
What?
Uh, number four, all licensed, all points licensed behavioral analysis, we have somebody on staff now. Uh, C seven, number four, can we, uh, was it C one? C seven, C seven, number four, it's right after the professional development. It's the addendum, that was added.
Oh.
You can see.
This, this one is used in I D E A funds, and if I'm not mistaken, um, Ms. Morgan Santos and Ms. Barbara Lino was discussing, this might be our student that has the P two and the nerves, so this might be separate from that B C D A that you're thinking. So he, this this is for that consultation.
So the, the cut says provide ongoing consultation of the twenty-two sessions. So is that, so that's a specific student, that's what you're saying?
It, it most likely, yes, because of the thought.
Can we, um, since it starts in September, can we find out and put it on next month or January, would that be more appropriate? Just an idea, I don't have a motion, uh, I'd rather see that, see whether, I think I can go back up for you.
Yes.
I have a motion to take, um, C seven, number four, the special services recommendation for all points opposed to behavior.
I'll move it.
Well, people see seven, number four, so we can get further clarification on their services.
Yes.
We have to have a vote.
Yeah. But so, just a motion, just a motion.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this version is seven, exactly, exactly. So B seven, yes.
Ms. Larkin?
No.
Mr. Lark?
Yes.
Ms. Eppi?
Yes.
Ms. Raich?
Yes.
Ms. Larkin?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
No. Uh, right now, I have a question, so C seven, how how for the, the C seven outfits, is that all one payment or is that multiple payments?
No, that's for the entire school year, so they'll get ten, twelve this month, eleven this month.
Yeah, as the, as yours coming, as you come back. As long as, so.
Okay, then if finally, if they finally voted no, but they not voting?
No, no.
So it's a no?
No, no.
So it's a no, great.
Seriously.
That's a doctor.
We still don't have the proper paperwork.
No, it's, it's.
And more, no. Exactly. Uh, I abstain on one through three. C one, sorry, C one, items one, two, three, I abstain. Sorry, just to clarify, on I, on page C four, item twelve, we didn't receive a copy of the audit delivery. C four, twelve, C, page C four, item twelve, the
I emailed and that was a long time ago, this is just the correction.
Is this the original audit letter in the year?
Yes, and this is just the correct batch, yes.
Oh, sorry, never mind. Uh, okay, so then, I abstain on one through three, I'm yes, three. C four, item twelve.
I have a court order, if we're having a discussion regarding a contract, we don't all have that information. Thank you.
I just went through the discussion process, I don't know this specific issue, I just, I'm here right now. The general concept with preschool program is that you can't once you're under contract rhythm, there are specific procedures and timelines by which you have to either renew or non-renew those contracts. State signs off on them and then be ordered for you to terminate a contract or to non-renew a contract, state has to sign off once you've entered the contract. So there's a whole process, so you can't just pull a higher permier.
So can we understand, we have, we have, excuse me. We had this conversation without, we understand we missed the deadline to we have to renew the contract extended, but again, to be said, that they failed to be the table properly in time. The question remains, it's, we have one notice and we're going to
That's actually an executive session, um, discussion, it's contractual issue. I can actually see the whole thing in very broad generic terms as far as like preschool contracts in general. There are two different ones, there's one, there's a general prior, there's one that's a head start prior. Each one has different terms, they also have very specific provisions for when you can and cannot spend, and when you can't with volatile, I think it's probably structured is it's within the upper three months, we have two different reasons for model writing the non-admitting pay, uh, one is a service compliance issue and another is, um, their basic enrollment. So, um, what can do with a specific contract is committed and it's also bad, so I looked at it, but just in really broad generic terms, the state has a very real lock on what we can do and what we can't do with these contracts, so it also reminds you that all of these, the preschool contracts are, are state funded. And so they basically dictate what you can do and how you can do it, and I tell you, if you're very difficult in general, terminate those contracts.
But what about, let's then talk instead about what is the recourse that is available during the life of contract to assure proper compliance by providing?
You can do, yeah, you can do corrective action plans, but, but you then, as I said, you can only hold for certain things, this year they modified it, they added, I'm forgetting, there are two provisions, that they added two additional reasons for it to be terminated. But as I said, you can't terminate these contracts, um, unless they basically lose their licenses, um, unless the state signs off on your termination.
Or we have, for students that are, we don't need.
Take them in, right, if we don't want to leave outside the line.
That's good.
Yes, that's all the questions. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have one follow-up question, so are we voting on a new contract for outfits or but it's a state mandate, it's a state mandated contract, I don't understand, is it manual or a temporary?
They're manual contracts, but they are, the way that it's structured is they're manual contracts, you're not going to renew, you have to not renew by a certain date.
We got it, we were passed that week, you missed the fight. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, that was my, I'm just a date right of the
But right now, I, I still would like, uh, I would like, we, 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 I have to go through the book, uh, but I would like for our attorney to review actionable steps.
Is it, I'm so sorry, Kate, nevermind.
I'm asking if attorney can make sure they approve actionable steps with board, please send an email to board as to what the status of this contract is.
Or canceling the outfits contract next year?
So canceling, is that actions that we could take?
No, we're just going with this contract.
You're asking what our clauses of action would be to cancel the contract? Like why we can't cancel the contract, is that the, what you're asking for?
No, right now, if documentation is provided, how do we handle what the consequences will impact in this contract?
I'm so sorry, so are we, are we in to approve this contract right now or?
Yes. Sure. We have to approve it.
Yes. We determine that was right, and so what Tracy's asking our attorney to do is provide us with details to, so that we don't know in forward what we need, what can happen in terms of if it cannot comply with the contract, yes, okay, thank you. Did I get all the votes? Sorry.
No, we didn't, we didn't vote.
We didn't vote yet.
We didn't vote.
So, I think you're good, right, I'm saying one through three, yes on the rest, all the way through C four, number twelve, I'm voting no on number thirteen. Um, we've been with yes on the rest. Page, page C four, twelve?
Do you need, uh, page C five, number thirteen?
No.
And yes, everything on. Ms. Larkin?
Yes.
Ms. Lark?
Yes. It's, uh, for now, I'm seeing five, thirteen, and no for out-of-state travel on addendum number three. Addendum, it's, if that then.
So no to C five, number thirteen, and C seven, number three.
Only as out-of-state travel.
Only if it has out-of-state. Thank you. Ms. Eppi?
Uh, those claims are going there on consultants. Everything else is yes, except, uh, C five, number thirteen, and um, C seven, number three, I believe there's, uh, a virtual professional development for an out-of-state, uh, conference, I will know on next month, so it's on the school, so I'm looking.
Ms. Raich?
I am voting on C one, one A, I'm voting no on all contracts. I abstain from two. I abstain from three. On page C four, eleven A. And B, I'm voting no, and that could, that's for group service. C five, number thirteen, I'm voting no. And on the addendum, travel and professional development, development, I'm only supporting in-state travel. No on out-of-state travel.
Thank you. Ms. Larkin?
Yes, except to no, that's two matters involved.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, it's I'll make a motion for, so, I'll make a motion.
Seven? One B one?
Yes, bye.
Bye.